Everyone, so great to see so many people here. I will, I'm Christine Sensenek, I'm Vice President. Steve is with us remotely this evening and I would like to call to order the June, the July 29th, 2025 Littit's Borough Council meeting. And I will pass the mic over to Eric.
All right, this evening, the invocation will be given by Lisa McCoy from the City Gate Prayer Room. Lisa.
Let's pray together. Almighty God, we give you thanks and we praise you for the mighty works that you have done in our community. You are loving, good, and gracious to us, and we thank you for creating us and sustaining us day by day. We thank you for our elected officials, the businesses, the churches, the families, and the many individuals that make our town of Littit's a great place to live. But Lord, we do acknowledge that we are not perfect and that we are a people in need of your grace. We do things that do not demonstrate your love, and so we ask that you would forgive us and heal the relationships that have been broken. And Father, we ask that you give wisdom and guidance to the members of our Borough Council, that they may navigate this evening with grace and peace, and that their decisions would honor you. I pray that you, Lord, would protect our police officers and all first responders as they serve our community in times of crisis and in times of peace. And I pray for our community, Father. I pray that you would shape us to be a town of peace and hope, a town that demonstrates sacrificial brotherly love, a community that welcomes strangers with care, a town that cares for the needy and stands firm in what we know is your truth. I pray for this council meeting tonight, Father. May every decision bring unity and harmony to our community, and may words that are spoken tonight be words that encourage and build each other up. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen.
And we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge the peace of God and of the Father, and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit.
And we'll just do a quick roll call here. Steve Lee.
Here.
Present remotely. Ken Mobley.
Here.
Mary Gaddis.
Here.
Tanya Carpenter.
Here.
And myself, Christine Sensenek, and Mayor. Council, you have before you the June 24th, 2025 council meeting minutes. Are there any questions or corrections?
Move to approve.
Say yep.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Steve, I believe that was an approval of the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. There's a little bit of a delay, no worries.
Yeah, I'm not used to be on this side of the delay.
Right, no worries. First order of business tonight is a presentation regarding 221 Raspberry Lane driveway. I will hand that over to the...
Good evening. Jeff Bowlby with Trimble Surveyors, representing Nate Machowski and Ron Van Anda. They are subdividing, the plan's been before you before. In the April 29th meeting, Planning Commission was April 1st. We have a small technicality we're trying to get approval for. I'll just go backwards. In April 1st, at the Planning Commission meeting, we came to the agreement that Ron Van Anda volunteered to build some sidewalk that wasn't connected. I'll show you a picture a little bit later. Meeting minutes say the sidewalk can be extended across the driveway, the existing driveway. Borough Council, April 29th was here, we got approval. In the minutes, it refers to the note, the owner is proposing to close the existing driveway access to Cedar Street, Cedar. We, Ron, put in a permit, got sidewalk built, got Borough approved it, was there. We got some comments from the Borough, basically that the sidewalk is not closed, meaning he put a depression in and it doesn't have vertical curves. So I'd like to just show you the two pictures before and after, just so everybody... About one property, golden home that's up for sale in Newark. This is the existing driveway in October 2024, and you can see the sidewalk down here is open right here, and that's what they were requesting to extend and close. Big driveway, the golden home here with the depression. And our second access right here is the whole point of contention right now that the sidewalk is not closed, meaning it has a depression for access in the back. Now, this is a vacant lot at this point, there's no proposed whatsoever. If they would try to build anything on it, they'd have to go all back through the Borough and get all that good stuff taken care of. Not to rip it out and see if this is acceptable and change the Borough Council of April 22nd requirements that it is to, the owner is proposing to close the existing driveway, and we're trying to see if that is an acceptable driveway with the depression. We have a clean letter from LCPC from the Borough, minus that comment, we're ready to record the plan.
Thank you, Jeff. Elijah, do you just want to weigh in on the engineering?
I think Jeff did a very good job. I actually have no concerns with it. I think it solves the comment that was provided at the Planning Commission, but because it was presented and approved in the minutes, I want to make sure that the record reflects that this condition is acceptable. Because it was tied with the fee and look, uh, fee and lieu rectifier, that whenever this is developed in the future, that language is going to go on the plan. So essentially just changing, is this acceptable versus the closure that was presented in April?
Council members, any questions?
My only concern was that we'd be able to follow the paper trail on this when it comes in five, 10, 15, 20 years later. And Elijah, I believe you said that that shouldn't be an issue.
Correct, because we have the assigned agreement, which will be on file, and then we also have the note on the plan indicating the deferral of the rec fee. So that if it has ever developed, whether it's from a land development standpoint or more likely from a stormwater, since a single house doesn't qualify for land development, that that would be paid at that time, and it would be either greater of the fee now or the fee at that point. So if for some reason our fee goes down in the future, they'd be required to pay the amount that they would have been required to pay now.
And that's the recreation fee.
Correct.
Thank you. I have no concerns. The move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
The next order of business on your agenda is item 1B, and I believe we are deferring that until the August meeting?
Yes, so request came in late yesterday to table that for August. There's two outstanding comments. The modifications that were requested were contingent upon the engineers being satisfied with the materials that were presented at the Planning Commission meeting. That review came through about the middle of the month, and they are not sufficient. So I, you can still take action at August and still be within the 90-day review period. However, if the comments are not addressed at that point satisfactorily, you either have to accept an extension or reject the plan for being deficient.
Thank you, Elijah, and you'll keep us on our toes about that.
Yes.
Timeline.
Do we need a motion to table that?
If you would like, I think it's more of a consent to carry on to the next one. So if you want an official action, I think that's fine, but I don't think it's necessary.
Are there any other questions or concerns?
No.
Okay. The next item of business, 1C, is the mid-year finance committee report. Ken and Tanya.
All right, Tanya, why don't we jump me out the mic? Right for you. So, is it on? Okay. Good evening. We've enjoyed coming to you at the middle of the year just to let you know how the Borough's finances are progressing. We give a mid-year report, and this year, we're going to have Tanya present the revenue and the expenses, as well as, we're going to give you some results of our cost initiative reduction. We're going to have Rob bring in a new dimension and share a little bit about the Borough debt, the types of debt we have, how it's used, and give you a little bit of background there. And then I'm going to wrap this up with a little bit about capital requests and funding, about the general fund, and just give Council some ideas to be thinking about as we prepare for the 2026 budget season. So thanks for coming, and Tanya, take her away.
All right. So, the following is going to be a mid-year report for fiscal year up until July 1st of 2025. And this is just for revenue that I'm going to go over with you. So the focus is going to be on the general fund with a comparison, year to, year comparison of year-to-date versus actual year-to-date budget. So it's important to remember, this only goes to July 1st of 2025. So this graph here you'll see indicates that our revenue is ahead of projections. But it should be noted that the majority of the revenue for the year has already been received. Taxes, transfers, inter-fund transfers. So the remaining is scheduled to come in from like, from permits, fines, sales of properties, local service tax on that one. Are we going one by one and asking Council if they have questions about this slide?
Okay, questions?
At the end, okay, all right. All right, Rob, you can jump to the next one, please. Okay. So, so basically, if you read this, it says, and in general, our revenue sources typically do not change much. Real estate taxes, estimated income tax, local tax, state tax, those are all main drivers of our revenue, and those are typically, don't fluctuate. So we've seen some decreases in some areas, street opening permits, but increases in others, building permits. So at this point, we believe in the increases and decreases will even out by the end of the year. All right, next one, please. All right, so now we're going the general fund expenses as of again, remember, July 1st, 2025. So our actual general fund expenses are substantially behind our budget, if you look. So, but you have to note that that's a good portion of our paving expenses have not yet been recorded. So most line items in our general fund expenses are below our budget. Okay. And as this one, same as, same as the other slide, our paving bids have come in under budget. At this point, we have not used all of our $200,000 contingency. So we're unsure of the delivery time of the Borough HVAC unit. It's possible that this could be, will not be invoiced till 2026. No, invoiced, will not be invoiced in 2025. So there's other expense line items that are trending behind schedule as well. So all this data includes, as in years past, our expenses will come in under budget. Okay, next one. Thank you. So expense management. So earlier this year, we asked all of the departments to come up with cutting expenses. So this is a criteria that we asked them to determine what impacts those cuts would have. So you can see there's priority, the criteria, high value, moderate, required by law, low usage. So that was the criteria. Can jump ahead. And then this is just a few examples of cost reductions that the departments came up with. You'll see cutting out in home cleaning instead of contractors' cleaning for the Public Works, remove the bond for Elijah, remove floor mat services. So these are just a few items from those departments. So the estimated total from, from all three departments, $18,000 is what we would save. And, and these are, these are the cuts that we are going to consider during November and December budget meeting. Are you next? Josh next, okay.
All right, folks, I'm going to talk and kind of drive from back here at the same time, so just bear with me. So this is debt summary. If you recall, in the beginning of the year, one of the finance committee's goals was to educate Council and the public on some of our debt that we have. So these next few slides are going to talk to that. So the biggest takeaway here is that our debt is long-term. As you can see, by our longest maturity date is 2040, and we, our rates are fixed, but they are competitive, certainly if you compare them to today's financial world. We have three types of debt. These are listed in chronological order by the time they were initiated. We have the 2010 note, a 2020 note, and the GO bond of 2023. So with the 2010 note, that was for funding for the major renovations at the wastewater treatment back, wastewater treatment plant back in 2010. There's been a few different iterations of this, but this is our, one note that's going to be expiring the soonest in 2030, and I believe also has the lowest interest rate. And this is totally expensed out of the sewer fund, so no taxes are used. It's all part of the water and sewer fees. Next up is the 2020 note. That was used for the Public Works garage renovation, the construction of the salt shed, and the construction of the new police garage. This one also matures in 2040 and is expensed through the general fund. And last but not least is our most recent, is the GO bond of 2023. And this is related to all the work that's surrounded with the Norfolk Southern Turnabout Line and the related stormwater work. I think the best way to look at this, the GO bond and what it entails, is if you can picture yourself standing on 501 Broad Street facing north, it would be all the work associated with the rail line towards your left, like going to the rec center over towards the school, nothing towards the right, it's all towards the left. So this next slide just takes the interest rates and the maturity dates and gives it a little bit more detail. So if you notice along the bottom, we have our timeline with 2040 being the maturity date with two of our three debt services. And then on the left-hand side is a list of all the different debts and the different interest rates. While I said the rates are fixed before, there are two of them that change by about a percent or so every few years, but they are locked in for long-term. So my last slide here is about the GO bond of 2023, and I just wanted to dig into this a little bit more because this one's a little tricky and, in my opinion, is probably our most critical to manage. So the GO bond of 2023, it's got to be used for specific projects, i.e. that runabout line and the related stormwater work. What's unique about this is that we are going to be reimbursed for 50% up to $1.5 million for all of that work. When, when that work happens, when the audit gets complete, and when we actually get the check back in the mail, is all really unknown. If you would have asked me this time, or six months ago, I would have thought the runabout line project probably would have gone out to bid this year, and here we are in July, and it's not going to happen. So while we're projecting and confident it'll happen in 2026, we still don't have everything out to bid and all the kind of boxes checked on that. So as we manage that bond, it's going to be real critical once we get that reimbursement, the audit's done, things of that nature surrounding that debt. And I think that's it for me, yeah. Back to you, Ken.
Thank you, Tanya and Rob. So I'm going to take you, we've been looking back here on the general fund, and I'd like to, to talk about some capital expenses in the general fund and the decision-making process that we use to drive those decisions. And that goes back to the, the general fund fund balance policy that was adopted back in August of 2013, and I think a member of that, of that Council is in the audience tonight. And it's a, it's a great policy to help the leaders manage this fund. So what that said back in August of 2018, 2013, was that it's the goal of the Borough to maintain a general fund balance equal to 20 to 35% of budgeted expenses. What this means is we must carry over between 20 and 35% of budgeted expenses as cash. This carryover is essential to cover expenses in January, February, March, and sometimes April. So as we move into the budget planning session, any decisions, any capital expenses that we decide, we need to be cognizant of how it affects our fund balance and our cash. In general terms, about $100,000 equals 1% in our budget scheme here. So any, if you raise, if you put $100,000 worth of capital expenses in the 2026 budget, that's going to reduce your fund balance by 1%. So that's a nice little rule of thumb and metric as you go through this presentation to be aware of. Next slide, please. So again, I'm trying to look forward, and we, and our committee wanted to, just to give Council an idea of what the end of the year would look like if, on a 2026 budgeted basis, and what the fund balance may look like. And so as this is just an example, this is how we would calculate the 2026 budget and fund balance using 2025 data, okay? That's what this is. So at the beginning of the year, we carried over 3.6 million. That was our carrier, and that's what we started the year with. If we use the tax revenue from this year of 8.7 million, we get a total revenue available of $12,350,000 for this, for the 2026 year. Remember, this is just an example. If we use 2025 expenses of $9,750,000, it would give us a remaining balance of about 2.6 million. Now, we need to account for the fund balance, and so we're going to take 25% as our goal, and we're going to take that against the budgeted expenses of $9,750,000. That's going to give us a value for the fund balance of $2,437,000, okay? When we take what's left against the fund balance, we have about $162,000 available for capital expenses. That's the point I'm trying to make, is to show you that as we go through the year, this is what we're projecting. It could be lower, it could be higher, just depends on how we end the year, okay? Let's go to the next slide. What's been fun over the last couple of years is implementing a capital policy with Rob. Rob came in and started requesting the managers to start looking at what the needs of their department and how to better serve the community. And out of this initiative, we developed a scorecard, which is really a great tool. It helps our managers anticipate the needs of the community in dollars and cents, and it also informs Council what they're looking for and how much does it cost. And they never stop with needs, it's always coming at us. This year, we received 13 capital requests for the general fund from our managers. Some examples of that are the HVAC controls. We have multiple dump trucks on the list, we have multiple police vehicles on the list, we have a mower, we have a snow blower, and we have quite a few other things that are on the list. These requests that we received for this year total, in the general fund, these requests total $820,000. So if you remember the last slide, 162 versus what we're requesting. Now, to be fair, this 820 is not for one year, it's multiple years, and that's Council's opportunity is to help manage that, okay? Please go to the next slide, please. So the message here for tonight is we wanted Council to recognize the capital requests for the general fund and help everyone get a good understanding of what our managers are looking for to serve the community. Littit's Borough has some aging equipment, some aging infrastructure, and replacement costs are not inexpensive, they are costly. Historically, we funded our capital requests from cash out of the general fund. There is nothing wrong with this practice, however, we may want to consider making some changes. Some ideas will be shared at future council meetings later this year. So our, our next steps that I'm asking of Council is to get your capital request scorecard, and if you need another copy, I have one for you, and start looking at that list to help determine priorities. I also want to say that Tanya, Tanya reported earlier this evening, we did look at how could we reduce some of our expenses, and we had all managers and every member participate in this survey. We can see they did a good job, but the opportunity for cost reduction is limited. It's about $18,000. Really, if you want to reduce cost here, you either let people go, you delay projects and push them out. That's really, we run a lean operation here at the Borough. So the Finance Committee is going to come back in August and in September with suggestions on how we can manage our capital strategy and also maybe some funding sources, our ideas that we can do to help manage this, this opportunity for the Borough, to get what we need and keep our community strong. Okay, let's move to a different topic, please. The next one is just a brief overview of the water, sewer, and stormwater funds. These are all funded by fees, and they're essential to the running of the Borough. You know, we operate a 4 million gallon a day sewer plant and a 3 million gallon a day water treatment plant. That's, that's a lot going on, and there's a lot of things that are needed to keep them going. But the good news is that these are all backed up by significant financial reserves. So we have, we have a lot of financial security. In case something goes wrong, we can get it fixed. We can get it operational quickly without a serious financial impact to the Borough. The Borough also has been working with Infomarc and Intech to do a 10-year forecast. So we, we are anticipating already what the needs of these plants may be and the costs that may be associated. So we're, our eyes are open and we're aware of what's happening. One new thing that was one of our goals this year was to develop a fund balance policy for both the water and the sewer fund. And this will help us drive financial decisions, much like the general fund has a fund balance policy. And so it's in draft form, and it needs to come to me and Mary to review, and then we'll propose it to Council. And finally, if you want any more detail on these particular funds, it's available in the 2024 audit that was, that's posted on the website. Okay, so in summary here, Tanya went over the, the revenue and the expenses, and we see that we're tracking per our budget, no concerns there. We also have recognized some, some good work done on cost reductions, but it's limited. Rob is, for the first time, we've, we shared some, some information on debt, what it's, where it came from, how we're managing it, what the interest rates are, what the maturity dates and how it's to be used. And then we've also just brought to Council's attention the need to look at the capital requests and how we manage that going forward, not just for next year, but for the years ahead, out and beyond, not just one, but multiple years. And then we see we're in good shape on the water, sewer, and stormwater fund. So the last slide is just to share some exciting work that's going on here at the Borough. We are asking our managers to continue their budget due diligence. The police and the Public Works leaders have already met with Finance, and we've had, we've already had one budget discussion, and we're getting some good insights on what, what they need. September will be managed where Infomarc is going to be providing a lot of the, the cost for next year so that we can in turn produce a preliminary budget to township. They, they approve their budget much earlier than we do, and then we'll continue to, to work with the department heads in September on their, on their plans. And then in October, Finance will produce our first draft budget. And then in November, we'll present that budget publicly on November 12th, and I think that's a Wednesday, I believe?
Should be.
I think it was.
Oh, because of Veterans Day.
Holiday on, on Tuesday, right? And then everything else is on a Tuesday. It's December 9th for public Q and A on the budget, and then December 23rd for the final vote. So that's our timeline. Okay. Thank you, Council, for your time. Are there any questions that, that you have of, of Tanya?
Hey, Chris, before you take question, I just have one quick thing. Ken had two edits. I pulled up the wrong, I pulled up the wrong file. The fund balance policy is 20 to 30%, not 19 to 35 as it said. And then there was one figure wrong on slide 13. It should have been a $500 in there, so those are two mistakes on my, my part, my bad. But just want to know, Ken told me about them, I just picked the wrong file, so I apologize.
Thank you, Rob. We appreciate your honesty, and 20, 20 to 35% is the correct?
20 to 35.
20 to 35, correct, yeah. Thank you, thank you. And Ken, Tanya, Rob, thank you all for all of your excellent work, all your hard work on this particular presentation. I think it's very, very well, and very informative for all of Council. The goal here was to educate Council on the budget status, the, the year-to-date status financially, and also educate us on the, the cost of, of the debt that we have and, and what that does to our budget and what to expect so that we can plan, better plan for the future. So I appreciate all the extra effort that went into, went into this wonderful presentation, so. Does Council have any questions?
I assume that a copy of this presentation will be made available to Council, thank...
Yes, with the corrections made, yep.
Thank you, the correct one. The correct one. Thank you. I appreciate the presentation, it's very informative. And I also just want to thank the finance committee for all the work you're doing and the department heads and our contractors. Capital planning is something that a lot of municipalities should have been doing for a long time and haven't done. And so I'm glad to see that we're doing it and doing the budgeting that's required to be responsible stewards of the community's resources. So thank you to the finance committee for your work.
Thank you.
And to the department heads. And contractor. That should go in the minutes.
All right.
Just kidding, just kidding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And in case anyone is um, taking notes on this, the uh, GO bond, I thought for sure Mary would ask this, the GO bond stands for general obligation.
I was going to, but then I just decided to spare everyone.
Rob, does Steve have any questions from remotely?
No, no questions.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions remotely?
Uh, no, nothing on chat.
Okay, thank you. And anyone in the audience? Go ahead, Dave.
Dave Carson, 226th Street. I do want to support the HVAC, it's really hot in here.
Thanks, David.
That's in a few years. But I, I did have a couple of questions and I'm not here to be a naysayer, but I'm just looking at your numbers, not negative like some people say. Last year's budget for me, for 2025 budget, you're projecting a deficit of expense, expenses over revenue, 909,000, right? The numbers you just gave now, 2026 budget, you're saying expenses over revenue of a million. Those are the numbers that I got off the slide, correct? So in two years, that's 1.9 million dollars of expenses over revenue. So what, I thought a very good trend in two years. I mean, just last from 2000, in 2025, you're projecting a 28% reduction of your general fund, fund balance of 909,531. 2026, you're projecting a $1 million fund balance. The borough can't keep going like that, either have to cut costs or raise taxes or raise fees. Am I off base with these numbers? Okay, so I think they need to be discussed and not being negative as some people might say, those are real numbers that we need to address or we're going to be sitting here in a few years with issues. And in my opinion, this is my opinion, I've been a, a financial person since 1983, so I do have some experience that before we talk about any capital improvements, we've got to address these deficits. I mean, 1.9 million dollars of deficits in two years, that's a lot of money. So, okay? So would that be something, I mean, you said you found $18,000 of savings, but that's really in the scheme of things, it's not very much. I mean, are there things that should be addressed? I mean, I know a few years ago I brought up potential, gonna get some hisses probably, police cost savings, not, not police uh, safety savings, but police cost savings because it is a big budget number, but I think we have to think about hard things here relatively soon. Do we agree with that?
Looking at it every day.
Okay, when, when will the, when will these numbers be discussed? I mean, we're talking about now mid-year, but pretty soon it'll be a budget season and will these be things that will be discussed or brought up?
Take some of your suggestions for Dave and then we have scheduled time in August, September to also address that.
Okay, all right. Okay, very good. Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm, but I'm okay, the numbers are what I'm saying pretty much, they're not surprises. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else from the audience? Go ahead, Chris.
Sure, which way to look? Uh, Chris Strayer, Front Street. Uh, I just honestly kind of want to echo a little bit about what David said. $18,000 is nothing and I really think council needs to go back to uh, the heads of those departments and push harder because I can tell you that citizens aren't going to go for a, a tax increase anytime soon and we need to figure out how to like get spending under control for sure. Because $18,000 is, that's not even a drip in the bucket. So thank you for your work, but push them harder. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? All right, thank you again, Ken and Tanea.
Thank you, everybody.
Next order of business tonight is uh, item 3A, resolution 1006. This is a resolution, excuse me, a resolution um, concerning Luther Care financing. Luther Acres has applied to the Lancaster Municipal Authority for financing a new project and as part of that, um, the borough is required to take some action in the form of a resolution. Um, the only action required and council, I'm reading from the letter um, from the lawyer, Blankinger Thomas, the lawyer for Luther Care, the only action required by the borough council is to adopt a resolution appointing the president or another member of borough council to act on behalf of the borough as the applicable elected representative as required under section 147 of the code. And I'm just going to let Elijah speak to this, just to give a little bit more of a brief understanding.
Right, so this is essentially funding that's open to uh, 501(c)(3)'s that would allow them to do a bond offering um, that is offered at a lower rate because the revenue from the bond by the purchasers would be tax exempt. Um, it's a requirement for the locality to approve this. It doesn't impact our collection of Luther Care's taxes. Uh, it doesn't give them any other kind of approvals. If any of this requires land development, tapping fees, anything, they still have to pay it. Is essentially just a way for the local municipality or the local government to say, yes, this is in the community's best interest. And we've done this probably at least six or seven times since I've been here.
That's what I was going to say.
And the most recent time was December.
We've done this several times in the past.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Elijah. Any questions or comments from council? Any questions from the audience? Okay, so I'd be looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 1006 for the Luther Care 2025, 25 financing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Uh, we have no agreements tonight, but moves us on to council members forum, item 5A, subcommittee report on wa- water, wastewater, stormwater. Ken?
Thank you very much. Chris, Doug, welcome. We would like to hear about the activities with Infomarc at the water and wastewater treatment plant. Thank you.
Sure. Um, one note, note where the event to mention was the uh, with the rain and flooding that happened towards the end of June. Um, we did see a, a, a significant increase in flow. Um, we were flowing about 2,000 gallons a minute uh, prior to the rain event and we saw peaks of about 7,700 gallons a minute uh, at the highest, which equates to about 11 million gallons per day. Um, we were able to maintain compliance, uh, we manned the plant 24 hours uh, throughout the event. Um, and we were manually controlling aeration and mixing to try and keep our solids. And then uh, we were also maintaining adequate, adequate treatment by aeration, by increasing aeration on the front end. And the, the only uh, the only other thing we did then was uh, we had to augment the UV uh, disinfection with chlorine, uh, but we were able to uh, to keep the disinfection uh, up. We sent a report to DEP uh, and they had no further requirements for us. Uh, all the, all of the um, the testing and uh, parameters were, are going to be within limits for uh, compliance. Uh, on page three of my report, uh, finance, uh, we were still over budget uh, for the month, uh, $7,273, which puts us a total, a year-to-date uh, over uh, 60,752. As I mentioned before, that's mainly due to um, sludge production and running the dryer for chemicals and utilities. Um, just to give you an idea where we're at with that, it did take an extra month for the weather to really warm up for the uh, the bio solids to really uh, start um, digesting. Uh, but uh, in June, we ran 15 days on the dryer. So far for July, we've only run five. So that's going to significantly keep slowing down and we'll be saving a lot more money that get that $60,000 over way down quickly. Uh, let's see here, I have no approval requests on page five, uh, as far as capital projects for the water plant. Uh, the pump three uh, uh, replacement is still in progress. Uh, the company is still looking into the defective part. We should get an idea soon of, of what they're going to be able to do about it. And then we need to talk a- again about getting PPNL to move the line unless that permanent move is done before they, they have a solution.
Uh, Doug, on that, weren't you seeking assistance from um, the company that made the pump to credit us for the electric move?
Uh, we actually, yeah, I don't, I don't know where that stands at the moment, but yeah, we're talking, we're in negotiations with them on that. It's still not going to, shouldn't go above, our, our costs still shouldn't go above what was budgeted. Uh, we're not getting charged for any of the extra work or anything like that. They have had issues with, same issues at other plants with similar pumps. So it's, it is a known issue. I, I will look into that though and then let you know. Next project is rebuilding the high service pump. Uh, that is expected to be completed uh, very soon in the next week or so. Uh, salt room door and the furnace replacement uh, are both uh, expected to be completed by the end of August. Uh, wastewater plant, capital projects. Um, the authority uh, approved three capital projects uh, on the 24th. That's the uh, replacement of the final clarifier drive, uh, pump station one motor and pump rebuild and the aerobic digester blower rebuild. So all of our current capital projects are approved and we're working to get those done as quickly as possible. Oh, the other one was the diffuser stock replacement and the NIR check valve repair, which are going to be done in conjunction with each other in quarter four. So hopefully by quarter four, that's the only one we have left. As far as compliance, both plants uh, at all parameters uh, were in compliance. Uh, water wastewater treatment plant average flow was 3.4 million gallons per day. Uh, it's up 6% for May. Um, and the water plant's uh, daily production average was 1.91 million gallons per day. That's up 4% for May. We had seven uh, emergency callouts at the wastewater treatment plant for various tank level alarms and general alarms, nothing of note. It's usually just a matter of going in, adjusting something and, and uh, we're all good. Uh, one at the water treatment plant for the Kissel Hill tank generator communication fault, which we, we got that straightened out. Um, and then uh, the last page for staffing, uh, we are fully staffed, but we are uh, screening applicants for a uh, maintenance two position at the wastewater plant.
What was that, a maintenance what?
Maintenance two. It's just a higher level of maintenance worker. That's all I have unless you have questions.
Doug, I like your report. It's nice to see our, our microbes are starting to get churning and reducing our costs. Any questions from council? Thank you for coming tonight, I appreciate that. I'd like to make a motion to approve the uh, June Infomarc report for the water and wastewater facilities.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Ken.
It's just uh, three uh, things to note. We did have a water sewer meeting on um, July 16th and we also had a Littit's Borough Authority meeting on the 24th. And like Doug said, there's a lot of things going on, a lot of projects are being completed and uh, and he did get the, the approval for the three uh, capital projects. So things are moving in those areas. I'm grateful for that. Mary, would you like anything on MS4?
Nope, nothing to report.
Okay, that, that completes our report.
Thank you, Ken. Subcommittee report on streets and traffic, Tanea.
Okay, got a couple, uh, I've got one special event to go over. Um, we've got the car cruise coming up on August 20th, running time from 5:00 PM to 8:30. It's going to be on Main Street and it's put on by the Littit's Lions Club. They're going to have about approximately 225 vehicles on display. This is the only special event um, on my list. Anybody have any questions? Okay, like to make a motion to approve the Littit's Lions Club car cruise on August 20th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the rest of these are activity permits, I'm going to run through them. Uh, first one is the National Night Out. It's going to take place on August 5th from 5:30 to 9:00 PM. It's going to be on East Lemon Street, which will be closed and it's put on for the um, National Night Out event by neighbors. Any questions? All right, we've got the Warwick High School Legends of the Warrior Marching Band Competition. Uh, it's going to take place October 4th of 2025, starting at noon and running until 9:30 PM. This is going to be the high school, high, the Warwick High School Stadium and it's put on by the Warwick Band Parents Organization. About 2,000 people are, are estimated to uh, to attend. Any questions? Yes.
Chris Strayer, Front Street. Uh, I brought this up, I think twice now, this will be the third time. I, I don't understand why organizations are being uh, asked to put in an activity permit at a place that's made for activities. So for example, the marching band putting in an activity permit for Saturday in the stadium when likely the day before the football team will have a football game and there's not an activity permit. It just seems like a waste of time, a waste of paper and I assume there's a fee associated with that.
The um, the idea is to down the road, we are coming, going to come up with a, a different kind of application, deciding what actually, who has to apply, who isn't going to apply. We've, we've been meeting about that, should be coming up. What do you say, Jared, a couple, month or two? We might, we'll be able to put something together because we agree.
Thank you.
Yep. All righty, jumping on to the next one. We've got the uh, Annual Departed Spirits Tour, October 25th, running from 5:00 PM to 9:30. It's going to be put on by the Littit's historian, Historical Foundation and they're asking for road closure of Church Lane. Expect about 350 people to attend. Questions? Nope. All right, we got the Annual Christmas Carol Sings is going to take place on December 11th between 6:30 and 8:00 PM at the Maravian Church Square. It's put on by the Littit's Historical Foundation, again uh, asking for Church Lane to be closed and it's for everybody to gather to sing at the Maravian Church Square. Questions? Last but not least, the West End Block Party of 2025. Uh, it's going to take place on Saturday, September 6th, running time from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. They're asking for the West End Avenue to be closed and it's a block party for the neighborhood. Anybody have any questions about these?
Sounds like fun.
Let's attend, except you have to live on West End Avenue. All right. Okay, I, I'd like to make a motion to approve the uh, National Night Out, Warwick High School Legend Warrior Marching Band Competition, the Departed Spirits Tour. Keep on rolling. Uh, Annual Christmas Carol Sing and the West End Block Party.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Next item is uh, advertising, the Kissel Hill and East 6th Street Stop Sign Ordinance. So council, if you recall, last month, we talked about getting our, our um, engineer to do a traffic study for that intersection. That came back and definitely warrants a four-way stop sign. So um, tonight we have to, they're, they're on several different criteria, pedestrians, sight distance, traffic volumes, crash analysis. If you recall, we had six, six accidents in six months, basically at that intersection. So um, looking for, looking for um, to advertise an amendment to the ordinance six, uh, C619 where we add the stop intersection established at Kissel Hill Road at East 6th Street facing eastbound and southbound traffic. Anybody have any questions about that one?
Elijah, could you just run down to for us the timing then of this particular uh, stop sign ordinance?
So that's a very good question because it's going to depend in part with Warwick Township. So by advertising this tonight, we can adopt it at the August meeting, but only half of the intersection is within the borough. So obviously Warwick Township needs to go through their process and it wouldn't be advisable to put up one stop sign and not have it on the other one. But this is essentially getting our ducks in the rose that when they're ready, we can implement it at the same time. And they, they commit to paying for, and I believe in the process of paying for the warrant analysis.
Okay.
It was done, so.
So at this point, we do know that they are in agreement as well with the, with the analysis and that it's.
Yes, yes. And the only thing is I don't know their timing on uh, implementing this.
Okay. Council, any, anyone else have any questions?
No.
Any questions from the audience? Dave?
Dave Carson, Dave Carson, 226th Street. I just want to ask, a few months ago, there was talk about a traffic study on East 6th Dave Carson, Dave Carson, 226 Street. I just want to ask, a few months ago, there was talk about a traffic study on East 6th Street itself. And are there any updates as far as results about that or where we're at with that? There was a parks meeting last week, Parks Committee meeting. Parents people were there when their issues were raised about traffic, parking, sight lines, stop signs. So I'm assuming this is separate. But what's the status on the East 6th Street Traffic Study, which I think was gonna be done by your traffic group from Harrisburg?
If you don't mind, David, thank you so much for that question. Let me finish up with this particular issue and then we'll and then we'll address that question since it kind of relates to a different thing. Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak directly to the stop sign advertising of the ordinance? Okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to advertise the amendment to ordinance number C 619 to, which is for Kissel Hill East 6th Street Stop Sign.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And thank you again, David. Elijah, do you want to give us a brief update on Mr. Carson's question?
Sure, yes. We have the draft supplied. I believe everyone on council has seen that correct. We were looking to possibly discuss. There's nothing in there that is as pressing as this issue with the crashes. So that's why this ended up moving forward first. I think if Streets and Traffic is comfortable, we can have a discussion on that at the next council meeting. I think the one thing is most of the improvements there, we're looking at future budgeting. It's going to be some traffic calming improvements and the like. But it's there's nothing to the degree of the crashes at this intersection that was found, so.
Thank you, Elijah. Go ahead, Steve.
And Chris, I would just say, I mean, there were, if anybody read the study, there were some recommendations in there. I would probably say the Streets and Traffic Committee should evaluate those things, identify some costs for each of them, and because that's gonna be the first question everyone's gonna have. What's the cost of some of the different suggestions in there? And then come forward, the Streets and Traffic Committee should come forward and make some recommendations.
Thank you, Steve. Tanaya, can we give you that action item?
Sure, I'll take it on.
All right, thank you. David, go ahead. Yes.
So will those will those things be brought before council at one time for like presentation and approval, or will residents hear about that as well before approval?
So we can present on the study and the findings. Anything that is, anything that comes out of that is gonna be essentially for construction in future years. So there's there's things like traffic calming and crosswalks and things like that. But this is obviously something that is pressing and is something that is, you know, fairly cheap to implement once we pass the ordinance.
Right, I'm not questioning the stop sign at all. I think that's necessary, obviously. I raised the question at the Parks Committee meeting. Again, I'm gonna ask. You put a development in there, a project in there at Sixth and Locust, we all know about. Now we're going back and trying, we're finding issues with that traffic there. Now we're looking for things to help. I understand why those things weren't discussed more fully and decided before a project was put in there. I'm not a traffic person, I'm not an engineer, but it seems to me like now you got a project in there, now you're concerned about traffic calming and this and that. The library, they put a parking lot in there to get people off the street down there when the street was extended. Now we're as a borough, put the project in, and we're looking to maybe help things out, and it's a budget item. I'm concerned about safety as well, and I think those things should have been discussed before the project was put in. My opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Tanaya, I believe you still have one more.
Do I do it? So North Cedar Street and New Street. Rob, if you could get some of those photographs, I think the one, if you could get the one that's labeled Southeast and Southwest Corner, those photographs that Jordan sent over this afternoon. I'll start talking and you can keep looking. Just to give you guys a basis of what I'm talking about. So there's some recent concerns were made to the police department regarding the visibility at the intersection of Cedar Street and New Street by the New Street Laundry. So I'm bringing this to council for consideration to determine whether we feel it's necessary to pursue a traffic study. So at this point right now, Cedars, no traffic or no stop signs are on that. So at the corner of the intersection of New Street with it being kind of an, it kind of bears off. It's not a straight four-way. It's a geometric odd angle. Okay, so here, perfect. So this is the intersection we're talking about. So try that southeast. Okay, do the southwest corner if you could, please. Might be the last one. Yeah. So this would be if you're sitting at the stop sign and the New Street Laundry is behind you. When, now, it's it's it looks fairly easy to see a car coming from your left if you're gonna go straight across or make a left. But there are issues, primary concerns are sight distance because it isn't an angle. When you're at that stop sign, you are kind of looking behind you as the vehicles are coming up Cedar Street. So so this is where, and we looked, I know Jared, you had looked into if there's any crashes at that intersection that would warrant that, and you came up with, you did a report, didn't find anything.
Okay. Jared, do you want to come up?
Yeah.
The crash query that I did was only for the last 12 months, and we've had no reported crashes at the intersection.
Okay, and so criteria for requesting a traffic study, I just wanted to remind everybody too. Crash analysis, acceleration lanes, geometric review, pedestrian volume, sight distance, speed data, and traffic volume. So I wanted everybody to just start chatting about that and asking questions. What are your thoughts about that? Is it something that we want to get into? Do we feel it's necessary? What you thinking?
Well, yeah, I think there's been an active discussion about this intersection in previous council, and I think we have some members of the community that are here to speak about it tonight. So yeah, let's take an opportunity to look at it. We've got a couple of suggestions out there. We I don't know there's a clear solution, but I'm I'm game to talk about it. I do go through that intersection every day. And the time of day that I go through is not when most of you are. It's five o'clock in the morning. So it's a little different. However, everything you just reported is true. That street, Cedar has a bit of an angle or a fade to it that makes visibility a little awkward. However, it is my opinion that if you use proper technique that you all learned in high school, come to a complete stop at the stop sign and then creep out, you can manage a safe crossing. You have to slow down, and unfortunately, we have drivers that do not. And and that's not necessarily the intersection's fault. It's poor driving, from my experience. That's all I'm saying, because I go there a lot. It seems like Scott brought up a good suggestion of maybe eliminating one of the parking spots to give better line of sight. That's a great suggestion. However, I'm sure neighbors would not like that because parking is a challenge there.
That wasn't Scott, just for clarification.
Sorry, giving you credit. But anyway, it's a valid point. An engineer made a suggestion. And you lose a parking spot, so that's a concern. But I still feel that I go there every day and even in busy times, and if you use proper technique, you can cross that intersection safely.
Right, and the concern was addressed to the police department, and I know there was different opinions and different concerns happened raised, so I just felt that this is another discussion item that's come up in the community recently, and there were community members who wanted to speak to it, and again, I believe they are here tonight.
Thank you, Chief. So I will open it up from anyone in the audience who would like to come up and speak on this issue, please. Go right ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Gray, Lori Lane. Now, when you look down the street there, when you come out, and I use it almost every day also, there are not all those parking spaces available. You have parking almost all the way, well, all the way up to the yellow line. And you, we always stop, inch out, look, inch out, look, and by that time, you're out on Cedar. You know, and someone's, excuse me, someone's barreling up through, and there you are, and they're blowing at you, almost hitting you. And that happened to my husband and I numerous times, and my neighbor lady said, and I know I have seen other people almost get hit. So you know, it isn't just a matter of inching out, I mean, which we do, but by that time when you can see when all the cars are there up to the yellow line, they're right there, and they blow or you're, you know, we almost got hit. Thank God we didn't, but we almost got hit many times there, and I've seen other people also. So thank you for letting me give my opinion. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And it would be good, and actually, I think someone told me before, and I think they mentioned two parking spaces, which would be worse, you know, for the parking for that. But if you have those two cars gone, you can really see very well down there. Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question of you? In your experience, when you're you're coming out of New Street
Right.
and you're going straight across?
No, right.
Your turn.
We usually go right.
So you're going on Cedar?
That's correct.
Okay, and the cars that are speeding.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. The cars that are speeding and blowing their horns at you are coming from the north, heading south.
They are coming, like if we're on New Street, they're coming this way.
They're coming from the left, from the north.
We are, we're really in their lane, you know, till you get out and then you can see you're in their lane.
Right.
So I can see why they blow.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Anyone else from the audience? Karen?
Karen Wyble, 202 North Cedar Street. That's my treeless house. So we have been down this road many years, many times. This is not a great intersection, but it certainly isn't the worst one in town. There are two problems here, and they have nothing to do with the intersection. They have to do with people speeding. And they now, I've noticed, have people literally not stopping on New Street and rolling into Cedar Street. Today, I watched five people in less than an hour do this, and two of them didn't even slow down. So Jared, the fact that we haven't had an accident there in one year is amazing. I would say it's been closer to five years that we've had a reportable accident at this intersection. We have tried to reduce speeding by putting up the speed counters, the digitals. The problem is, is when Jared or Carrie Nye would put an officer farther up Cedar Street, there's no place to pull somebody over. So it's not a great place to run a speed trap. This is always gonna be a problem there. I've talked to some of my neighbors. We are amazed at the noise inundation that the intensity of traffic has brought with us over time. Part of that is opening up New Street to 501. A lot of people use this as a cut around from the traffic backup on 501. Part of it is commercial vehicles. The numbers of commercial vehicles that are using Cedar Street to come to town now is excessive. The noise is amazing, and we really noticed it during COVID, when nobody was doing business and nobody was driving. For forty-some years, my husband and I have lived here, and when we first lived here, everybody porch sat. We porch sat, we visited neighbors, we walked up and down the street, we knew everybody. Nobody has porch sat because of the noise and the dirt, the street dirt. And God forbid, I am not, I'm not dishing public works because all hail the street sweeper, and those guys know I feel that way. There's just a lot going on on this street, and it's not something I believe a four-way stop is going to really take care of. I do have one suggestion, which is maybe good, maybe not so good, but my neighbor and I were sitting on his stoof yesterday talking about this. And the thought is, if you do a traffic study, A, please do the counts after school starts because there's a tremendous increase in traffic on the way to Littit's L on Cedar Street. But B, why don't we consider make? Can I have a variance, please?
Yes, go ahead, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you. What if we would consider making New Street between Cedar and Lincoln one way in the direction of Lincoln? No one would be able to go from New Street onto Cedar as a right, okay, which this lady has the problem with. But it would definitely cut out some of this through traffic, and it would cut down on the speeding on New Street. And it might, it might help a little bit in the situation without doing something really drastic. All of these houses on these blocks in the 1 and 200 block of North Cedar Street literally sit on the sidewalk. There are no front lawns. There's no setback. Mary, it's just like your place, like Steve's place. So you hear everything that happens on the street. So having five or six commercial vehicles backed up at a stop at a four-way stop is not something, really, it would make me think, do I need to sell my house, to be quite honest with you? That kind of noise, I don't think is acceptable to our neighborhood. Parking is an issue because people don't like to park in back of their houses. This area has really long, thin lots. And so the detached garages are pretty far back. We do have an ADA spot, and we have a spot for a challenged child with special needs and two elderly people who definitely need some some help, and we always make sure that the neighborhood make sure that they're taken care of. So that's my two cents. Thank you for listening. Thanks for the variance on the time.
Thank you, Karen. We appreciate your input and your suggestions. Can someone just confirm, parking is allowed on both sides of Cedar Street or only on the west side? Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Go ahead. Yes, thank you, Sandy.
I am thinking that when we make a right from New Street onto Cedar, a lot of, that's the way, you know, you get downtown, you know, everybody mostly goes that way. So I'm thinking a four-way stop sign would really be the answer because you will have both, I mean, there's four-way stop signs all over Littit's. And I think there, I think that's a good safety issue. So I think if you have a four-way stop sign, you would have them stopping at every direction, and I know it's a busy street, but I just don't think the right, you know, from going right from New Street would be good to have a one-way and not be able to go up that way. Because it's a very, you know, use-worthy street. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Anyone else from the audience? Rob, are there any questions, comments online? Thank you.
So what do we do with this at this point? We've heard it. Do we decide, we take a motion to decide whether we want to do a traffic study? Or?
I'm curious if we know what the cost of a traffic study would be for this intersection.
So it depends on what you want to look at specifically. What was suggested is a warrant analysis like we did at Kissel Hill and 6th Street. That was $2,400. If you're looking at a more intensive traffic study, looking at one-way, looking at traffic counts, things like that, that cost can increase. I think it would be good to have an understanding of if you want to do a traffic study, what do you want to look at beyond a four-way stop? And that would be a question then for our traffic engineer, what that cost would be. But if it's just a stop sign warrant analysis, the last one we had was $2,400.
Tanaya, I'm not sure if you drew the short straw or not, but Streets is awfully busy and has been. Are there other intersections that we're aware of where we've had complaints or issues raised? I mean, I agree with whoever said there are numerous places in the borough because of the configuration of our, so many of our roads are just odd. So are we aware of any other locations? Where we've had? Yeah, I guess I'm particularly interested in other Yeah, I guess I'm particularly interested in other places where we've got a lot of crashes and the borough.
We've had other intersections that will get complaints occasionally. Somebody calls in because they see somebody run through a stop sign, or they think somebody went too fast through neighborhood. I think what distinguishes this intersection is that the feedback from the community is persistent. I think anyone who's either been on council or living in the area or paying attention has probably heard this for many years. So I think that would be kind of the context that would separate this intersection from a lot of the others where, and a lot of the other contexts, it's just a complaint maybe here or there, where this one seems to just keep, keep coming up.
Can I make a suggestion, Tanya, that maybe we look into the source of most of the complaints? Whether they are people traveling the road, such as our wonderful resident Sandy, who spoke on this, or coming from the residents who live right in that general vicinity? And let's, let's get an understanding of where the majority of the complaints are coming from.
Okay, I can do that.
As one action item.
Tanya, one other thing, let me direct it to Elijah. Would a warrant analysis, would that capture a site study, or is that, is that another type of traffic study?
It would look at site distances at that intersection. And I think what I heard from Jay is the, the configuration of this intersection, the fact that it's not a 90-degree angle, and the fact that the buildings are right there are what's complicating it, and which is, just like he did, he provided kind of a, yes, it looks like this one would go. If we did one here, he thinks it would also go as well, that it would be up for one. Now, the question is not whether you could put one there. I think what Karen's raising is, is in the community's best interest. And that's kind of what you guys were touching on just now. Um, but if you did the study based on Jay's feedback, it would meet because of the configuration of the intersection.
Yes, I'd like to, I, I believe this issue really just has come up in the last couple of days and forced you to do a lot of really quick legwork to bring this to our attention tonight. I'd like to suggest that Streets Committee take a, take a month to look at it and come back to us with a recommendation.
Okay. Do that.
Wonderful. Thank you all very much for the wonderful discussion. Uh, moving on to item 5C, Subcommittee Report on Finance. Ken?
Yes, Finance has a couple items of business to, to share with the public tonight. The first is, um, let me give you some background. It's the one-year trash collection contract extension. So Liddits Borough Contracts Trash Removal with Casella Waste Systems. We're in the final year of a three-year contract. We, as part of our contract, we have the opportunity to, or the option to do a one-year renewal extension or a three-year rebid. So we, we've done some deep dive into the data on that today. Our, our unit fee is, is $209.37. If we did a one-year extension, our unit fee would be $213.42. If, for context, if we went to the open market and rebid this contract, we've got some data from local municipalities, and it's already over $230 for the unit fee. And that was done last year, so it would most likely be higher. So our, our team has, has landed on accepting a one-year renewal extension. So any questions? This is what we pay the, the trash haulers to, to remove the trashes, what our, our costs are. And then we'll rebid this next year.
Okay, I'd like to take, I'll make a note, just to clarify, you do have one more extra one-year extension you can do. It's a three-year contract with two one-year extensions. So you will have this option again next year.
I would recommend we do that. And the rebid is expensive from our neighbors.
And can I just clarify that this rate is our unit cost? It is not the cost to the customers, so we are not looking at changing garbage fees at this point.
Right, okay.
Like these contracts, in the, in the language, they, they do allow increases in, in the cost to us over those time periods. So yeah, this is a cost to us. No, no extra cost to residents. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the one-year trash correction renewal contract extension with Casella Waste Systems at $213.43 unit fee.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Council, and before you, you've got the, the financial statement for the month of July. And Tanya, you've just gone over everything, so I think we're in good shape. Any, any questions? I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial statement and pay all the invoices.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, Subcommittee Report on Personnel. Jerry is not here. Subcommittee Report on Planning. That's me. We do have one item of business this evening, and that is regarding 256 South Cedar Street, the Financial Security Release. So this project is completed. And the engineer is requesting that we release the builder escrow from the, for the balance of the escrow amount, which is $23,856.25. Any questions from Council? This is pretty straightforward. All right, I'll be looking for a motion then.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Next item of business, Subcommittee Report on Zoning. Mary?
Uh, nothing to report.
Thank you, Mary. Subcommittee Report on Buildings and Grounds. Back to you, Ken.
That'll be me. Um, we have a Borough Hall HVAC Change Order Number One. So the background here is the change order will repair the control portion of the HVAC air handler unit number three that, that services the council chamber in this room. The work is in addition to the already approved Borough Hall HVAC project. The total cost for the council chamber controls is $17,600 and will be managed by GSM. Any questions?
How soon will they get to do the work?
It's not my next council meeting, is it? I don't think.
Well, I feel confident it'll be ready by the next council meeting. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's going to be hotter in August. You know that. All right.
All right, without delay, I'd like to make a motion to approve Change Order Number One for the Liddits Borough all HVAC control equipment at the total cost of $17,600.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. If it's not fixed, I think Mary will bring ice cream or something.
Hey, I have three other items here under parks. We're busy. Uh, just want to say we had a nice meeting on July 21st over Sixth Street, and Scott and his team continue to put the committee in, in the public, in the parks. And it's great. We got great discussion. We got some members that were there. We had good dialogue. It's great to hear people's comments. So, um, out of that, people are generally pleased with what's going on there. And, um, and, and it was a great opportunity to, to express other, other concerns as well. One of the things that came up was, uh, could we provide a bicycle storage rack? Apparently, uh, some of the, the, the parents are taking their kids on bikes over to the library, and they would like to stop at the park, and they would like to, instead of just slinging their bikes on the sidewalk, they'd like a place. Uh, the committee did approve that, and we do have, uh, funding for that. So tonight I'd like Council to consider supporting them to put a bike rack over at Sixth Street. So I think I need to make a motion. So any questions there or?
I do. Just educate me a little bit. Do other parks have bike racks?
You and Mary think alike.
Oh.
Mary brought up a great suggestion earlier about could we task the park committee to look at other locations and are they equipped with bicycle racks? And I think the answer is we need to do, we need to do that, right? Yeah, so, um, Tanya, that is one of the next things I'll, I'll work with Scott on is, is taking a survey and looking at all the other locations.
Do you have any idea what the estimate would be?
Yes, we, we have an estimate of about $5,000.
So it all depends. It's tariff related because the, that's not for the bike rack, it's for the concrete pad. And then the bike rack itself is anywhere between five and a thousand, depending on how large of a bike rack. And these are the bike racks that are in our subdivision land development ordinance that we specify. The only unfortunate factor is the company that we selected is Canadian, and I've not gotten a firm commitment on what the tariff impact would be for that cost.
And we have to go with this Canadian?
We do not, but it is what's required in our subdivision land development ordinance. So that kind of brings up a broader, um, discussion of do we want to change what's in our form-based code? Because that's generally when we're selecting things like the Washington or the, the benches out front, the steel benches, we defer to what we're requiring other people to do, so there's a consistent visual nature. The bike rack that was selected was from Dober Design, which is out of British Columbia, Canada. Um, so I have the cost that's on the website, but I have no idea what other costs are. So I would say without tariffs, it'd be probably, in the concrete work, it would be about $2,500 to $3,000. But with the tariffs, that is going to go up. So I thought 5,000 was a relatively safe estimate.
And the majority of the price is to just the concrete slab? We have to put it on a concrete slab? We can't? Let me go crazy. Concrete, just the ends of both sides in the ground there?
So what ends up happening is you would end up getting a mud pit in that area.
And it, it's already on concrete slab in town, and it, it creates a nice consistency among other bike racks.
All right, so you said we have money for that.
Yes, we do.
Do we know how much we've got available to use?
I think, uh, it's well north of, of 5,000, uh, 100.
So when, when Sixth Street Park was approved by Council, it was approved to be used with fee in lieu funding from the park fund up to $250,000. As of today, total expenditures for the park is $123,000. So we are right now half of what was already approved for the budget.
Just a question. That, that's only approved for that park. We can't use that at New Street that really needs to, okay? What do we typically like to keep in rainy day funds for repairs, maintenance, upkeep? I hate to keep chipping away at that, and then there's nothing left.
You can't use this money. I don't believe you can use this money for that, for maintenance.
So in theory, so this is a totally separate fund. Typically, maintenance costs come from the general fund budget that you approve every year for parks. This is a totally separate fund that is, um, based on developer fees, just like we were talking about with this house on Cedar Street. Whenever you construct new residential units, technically, they're required to provide residential, or excuse me, recreational space. If they don't, the other option is to basically pay a fee in lieu of, which developers have done and that we carry in a, in a pot of money.
Okay.
So the.
But that's only delegated to this park.
The approval that was done for the 250,000 was just for Sixth Street Park for its development. And this was the first park committee viewing of that park since its development. So in my mind, it was sort of a what else is needed? And, and it's well under budget at this point.
I'm just trying to understand all of that, so I appreciate that.
So some of my takeaways would be to connect with Scott and his committee on other bike racks that are needed throughout our, and do a nice survey. And we can, uh, consider that for budgeting purposes if we want to move forward. And, uh, Mary made a nice suggestion. If we are in need of more bike racks, are there grants available that we could write and apply for to help fund some of these, uh, these bike racks? So I think, I think that's everything that we know at the moment. Okay, so any more questions?
Do you have something, Mary?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the pot of money that we're drawing this from. So, um, my understanding is that there is a pot of money that has come from developer fees for the fee in lieu. That is for parks within a certain radius of the development? Is that correct?
Generally, yes.
Okay, and do we have an understanding of what that radius is and what other potential projects we may want to fund out of that that satisfy the obligations around the use of those funds?
So specifically with Sixth Street Park, we talked with the developers whose funding we were using and made sure that they were comfortable with investment in this park, and they were. Um, there is not an established, it has to be within X amount of, uh, distance from the development.
Okay.
It's, I believe the code says it has to be reasonably accessible to the development. And when you're in a two-square-mile borough with sidewalks everywhere, the argument can be made that everything is reasonably accessible.
Okay. Thank you.
Good?
Good.
All right, good discussion. Okay, I'd like to move to approve the installation of a bike rack at Sixth Street Park.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ken, can I just take the opportunity to make one point of clarification on this issue that was brought up since it's so timely? The ordinance does not specify a particular vendor, any items in the borough, I'm assuming. It's just, it's like, for this example, it doesn't specify a vendor from Canada. It specifies a required design, structure integrity, height, weight, whatever, what's mentioned metrics that way.
Unfortunately not.
No.
It literally says a Bella bike rack from Dober Design.
That's interesting. Okay.
Of course, we did that. Yeah, we did that with the form-based code years ago. It's garbage cans, it's light, uh, standards. It's, it's anything just to keep consistency with the form-based code, so you don't have 20 different garbage cans, 20 different light standards, 20 different bike racks.
So this isn't a land development, so technically that's not applicable. But from a general point of practice, whenever we purchase benches or other kind of site facilities, I use that as a reference so that we're not basically buying stuff that we're telling other people to put in, and we're not doing it ourselves.
Okay.
I have found one that is very similar that's from a company in Minnesota. It's slightly different. It's slightly higher, uh, but relatively it looks the same. But it's not the one that's specified in the code.
Okay. Should we decide we want to purchase that one instead for whatever reason, reasons, tariff, costs, whatever? What would be the process for approving that? Would it be a change to the ordinance, or would it be an exception?
So that wouldn't necessarily be needed because this isn't a land development. I think it's basically just acknowledging it, and we can document why you're going with a different one, and that it's basically the same. There are other things that says that a below-approved alternative, but in looking over this section today, I did not see the same thing.
All right, all right. Could you figure out what that would, that cost would be versus both of them? So we have estimates?
Yeah, I can definitely do that.
Okay, and you can wait till after August 1st to do that? I think the tariffs are August 1st deadline.
Yeah, we're not going to, not going to get it before August 4th, unfortunately.
All right, thank you, Ken. Go ahead.
Yeah, two, two final thoughts. The, uh, at that meeting, uh, the committee recognized the passing of Vern Martin. Vern was a tremendous volunteer here in Liddits. Uh, he passed, uh, in early July. Uh, he was 80 years old and, um, Vern was a character. He was a great community, uh, citizen. And so, um, I knew him as the Warwick High School Special Speaker that my wife would get to talk about the Berlin airlift that he, as a child, received the packages of food being airdropped by the American military. And I just think that brings an enormous amount of, of pride about our country, serving others in need when that was happening. And he saw it from the, the ground, and he could see the parachutes coming down, and that was food. That was life. That was sustaining them. Vern came to the United States, had a family, and I listened to his family talk about him and the funny stories and the, the way he challenged his children and kept everybody, um, entertained with life. Just delightful in a way that he brought life to everybody. So he will be missed. And, um, I want to let you know that the committee approved his signage request about a year ago to identify trees and write a little bit about it for education, uh, in our borough. So Scott and his team are doing that, and then, uh, there, there's a recommendation to supply a tree in his honor. And then Nikki, his wife, would like to, uh, donate, uh, a park bench. So we're going to find the right place for this in, in memory of Vern. So the final thing is a message from Jerry. Jerry is not able to be here tonight. He's up in Canada, so maybe we ought to have him strap on a bike rack on the way down when he comes home. Maybe we'll save a few shekels there. So Jerry's comment is just, uh, an appreciation to our, uh, when he comes home. Maybe we'll save a few shekels there. So Jerry's comment is just uh an appreciation uh to our our the Public Works Department, the Police Department and the Emergency Services. So um Jerry uh was very moved on on the on the Fourth of July event. And so here's uh I quote, "On behalf of the Borough Council, I want to express appreciation for all of the planning, hard work and long hours contributed to our community during the July fourth weekend. As I walked the town on Friday morning, I observed public works crews placing road barriers at intersections, police officers patrolling traffic and emergency equipment stationed to respond to any emergency. It's this dedication to our community that makes Littit's Borough a special town." So I'm sorry that we don't have everybody here tonight, but we'll we uh Rob and Elijah, let's pass that word on to our teams, okay? Chris, I rest.
Thank you very much, Ken. Appreciate you. Um Subcommittee Report on Regional Plan, Mary.
Yes, thank you. Um, we met as a regional committee last week, uh July twenty-fourth, I believe it was. We met with folks from Warwick Township and Elizabeth Township to discuss implementation of the regional comprehensive plan. And uh we agreed as a committee to move forward with convening our large employers to have discussions about housing and how they can be a part of um and contribute to the um solutions that we are looking for in our community um to deal with housing shortages. So the Borough Committee um has accepted the responsibilities for putting together the next steps and what a task force would look like. We're looking uh to form a task force to undertake that work. Um, so we're looking forward to that and moving that conversation forward. If anybody is interested in assisting us with that and uh working with us as part of a task force, please let me know or Elijah. And Elijah, with that, I'll just pitch to you to see if there's anything else you wanted to highlight from our meetings.
Um, not off. Oh, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna say it during my report, but um the region is looking at updating the official map and Planning Commission will be discussing it at the Planning Commission meeting a week from the day in here.
And can you just give a brief, what is the official map?
So one thinks an official map is an official street map, which it is. And that's typically what we use it for. When someone says, why isn't the unpaved alley behind my house getting plowed? Uh I send that to them and say, it's not, we've never accepted it. We don't view it as a official right of way. Oftentimes they're not even on the map because they're orphaned right of way, which is something that we get a lot of. But it can also look at anything of uh public interest. And it gives the borough the right of first refusal if some of this land comes up for development that we can essentially take that land, purchase that land for any number of public interests. I think the two that are on the current one, which uh it's not in here right now because it's actually the frames we have are square and everything we get is not square. Uh it is on the website. Is the regional stormwater bank outside of Littit Springs Park that is tied with the runabout line. And then we actually have, I think, three different trail alignments, two of which is for the extension of the rail trail that's on Oak Street. Because we weren't sure Norfolk Southern was going to be working with us the last time we updated it. Uh, the other one is more of an aspirational one, and it would be one following the Santa Domingo. I think there's issues with terrain and topography. But putting it on the official map at least has that as a discussion if those properties ever come up for development. So it is, you know, up for discussion if there's certain things. I think we talked, I offered about um critical offer for recharge areas and uh wellhead protection areas, whether we wanted that. But it is sort of a open for discussion. So if you have interests, if you have suggestions, come to the Planning Commission meeting in a week.
Thank you, Elijah. Uh, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, next item, report of the Borough Engineer Council. You should have memos from um David Miller Associates and also N-Tech. Are there any questions regarding the engineer reports? Okay, moving on, report by the mayor and then the chief of police, Mr. Mayor.
My report.
Thank you, Chief.
Just want to announce or remind those the the National Night Out that the Police Department sponsors with the Treehouse Playground is scheduled for Tuesday, August twelfth. The rain date is the evening after the thirteenth. Lot of activities, uh food, community interactions between police, fire, EMS, obviously, community members that want to come look at vehicles, talk with first responders, dunk tanks, bounce houses, a lot of kid geared activities just to get everybody together. So that is scheduled for the twelfth.
Just a question about why we're doing it on the twelfth instead of the fifth, which I think is the national National Night Out.
Right. So we have traditionally done it a week later.
Okay.
A lot of times you're competing with other events nearby and, you know, different block parties that might be happening at the same time. So we had bumped it back several years ago so that we're not competing with other events because we feel that gives us a better attendance.
If I'm not mistaken, the idea is that people go out onto their front porches, Karen, and um visit with neighbors on that night. That's that's kind of the origin of it, right? Was more community oriented. So you're doing it on that night because that allows other people to do just kind of an organic.
It also gives us additional opportunities to connect with the community. So we'll send officers out to the block parties either that we know about that are happening or that they come across just through patrols. We'll stop and mingle for a little bit, but then we'll also have our organized event, which is the week following.
Great. Thank you.
Sure. And the other thing I guess like to publicly acknowledge the park board and express our appreciation to them. Several months ago, I I guess it would have been about beginning of the year, obviously, they installed the traffic gates to address some of the traffic concerns that the park was experiencing with people using it as a pass through. We had had opportunities to uh overcome those gates if we needed to, if we need for some sort of tactical or emergency reason to get through the park quickly. The park had donated uh this week essentially garage door openers that uh we can put into our vehicles that allow us to have increased efficiency if we need to get through the park so that we can click that that opener and have the gate open prior to our arrival at that gate. Um, again, we had opportunities to get through it before. It just slowed us down a little bit. We had to enter a code. So depending on the circumstances, we might need to get through it a little bit faster. So uh through the kind consideration and generation of generosity of the park, they've given us that ability if the situation would require it. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions?
Chair, you gonna touch on overtime?
Sure. So uh as part of my conversation with uh Finance Committee, obviously, I've come into this role in the last couple of months. One of the things that that I have been looking at is overtime procedures, legacy practices with overtime, adjustments we can make into the future as far as if there are different ways to to go about it. So a couple of the strategies that I had suggested and we discussed was, I think there's a couple of different things we could do rather quickly and easily to uh address overtime. So one is internally, I've reorganized the the priority listing of what we direct our supervisors to when there is an open shift. So it it reduces or it lowers overtime on that list of priorities. So we're looking at other options such as day for day switches within the schedule, uh having units or other officers within different units fill in and patrol. So for example, you know, I filled a couple of patrol shifts recently. Having detectives fill a couple of patrol shifts to eliminate those uh those needs to fill it with overtime. And also looking at uh obviously meeting our obligations through collective bargaining to provide time off versus, you know, what provisions that we can apply to deny time off if it's going to create overtime while still balancing our obligations to the employees. So we're looking at a lot of different strategies. Um, running some quick numbers, uh January one through June thirty, twenty twenty-four, compared to that same time period in twenty twenty-five, we've already realized uh approximately a fifteen percent reduction in total overtime in that same time period. So obviously, we're looking at continued ways to reduce overtime, be strategic about when and how it's supplied. Uh, obviously, we're just getting started with some of these new initiatives. So I forecast that we'll continue to see efficiencies and improvements. Uh, also looking at uh different agreements that we have in place with different entities about how we cover costs associated with overtime. So for example, if there is an overtime that arises from special event or some sort of other way to capture grant funding to reimburse that overtime, we're looking at that. Uh, year to date, we've recovered about twenty-five percent of our overtime costs. So we're looking at different efficiencies, different strategies. We're starting to see some improvements. And obviously, as we look into the future, we're going to continue to uh try to leverage those efficiencies and cost savings where we can and evaluate the the solutions that we're putting into place to see if if they're doing what we expect them to do.
Chief, thank you for your leadership. That's great. We were pleased to hear that. Hey, uh, on another note, um, is is there a schedule when we may have officers walking downtown and is uh on the beat, so to speak, without being in a vehicle, anything like that? That I'm I'm missing it if it's if it's out there. I haven't seen it yet.
Right. So obviously, you know, we, part of the challenge in the past with with being so understaffed for a couple of years, it was difficult to get the officers out of the car as often as we'd like them to be. So one of the things that that I had explored when I took this position was connecting with the merchants, getting their feedback on, you know, what their experiences have been recently with the officers on foot. We recognize that getting officers out of the car has a lot of benefits, both from a health perspective to get them walking a little bit, the visibility perspective and just the community connections. So we've also uh put out an internal survey looking at uh what the officers feel are valuable as far as how we can maintain and enhance those social or community connections. So I'm still compiling on the data, but I anticipate one of the outcomes from that will be uh an increased emphasis on uh ensuring the officers have the time and the ability and the clear understanding that is an expectation to be, you know, interacting with the community and the non-traditional ways that many people believe is what makes Littit special.
Glad to hear it. Thank you. Um, uh, that's all I have. I just want to let everybody know, we had a great meeting with Joe uh discussing the budget and uh he gave some great insights to us as we went through the the budget. So thank you for your time. It's good.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Report by the Managing Directors. Rob, we'll start with you.
Uh, you guys all have my uh report. Just one thing I wanted to add that's not included, the website migration estimated start date is September second, twenty twenty-five. Um, once they start the the migration, it should take about six to eight weeks um to actually, you know, get all the information over and up. So uh, long story short, probably looking um, you know, end of October uh to have a new website. That's all I have.
And if I read that correct, the migration that is to no cost to us.
No cost in twenty twenty-five. We'll we'll see the cost in in twenty-six.
Okay, sure. Okay. All right, Elijah.
Uh, the only thing I have to add um or just cover is the uh status for the runabout line. As you know, we have the uh draft agreement from Norfolk Southern. We got our solicitor's comments back. Um, I addressed some of the questions that he had. I think the one thing for that he wanted to make sure you were all aware of is just the responsibility and the costs associated with the project, which I don't think is news to anyone that we're on the hook for it. I think the only outstanding item is uh DMA is going is reviewing the um Exhibit A. I reviewed it. It looks identical to what we previously committed to. I just want Scott's eyes on it to make sure that that's the case. And then I think we're able to get our comments back to Norfolk Southern and get that moving. Unfortunately, Rob uh broke the news to me that uh the agreement for uh Union Pacific to buy Norfolk Southern was approved uh by the respective companies today. There are uh likely going to be approvals and challenges and whatnot, so I'm not sure of what the timing is. But I do think us having a agreement in place is going to only have a benefit moving forward for the project.
Great.
So trying to keep this moving.
Right. Thank you for your continued efforts on this, Elijah. Been a long time coming, but still have some work to do. We are down to petitions, correspondence and questions. This will be our public comments, questions. Uh, does the public have any comments or questions on anything that was not covered on the agenda tonight? Go ahead. Kathleen, we'll let you go first.
Hi. Good evening. Um, my name is Kathleen O'Hara. I live at twenty Cardiff Court. This is probably, this is quite an unusual comment for a Borough Council, but um I wanted to bring to the council the thought of how we as a community might want to think about immigration and customs enforcement and when agents arrive in town possibly to conduct their business. I chatted with the chief a couple of days ago, yesterday, the day before, and we had a good conversation, but from what I understand, um federal law supersedes state and local law. So if we wanted to implement an ordinance saying if ICE agents want to come into town, they need to wear a professional uniform, show ID and um not have full face masks, only medical masks if they're needed. So I'm just kind of throwing the idea out there. I mean, we live in a nice, calm, quiet community. I don't know if everyone has seen videos of some of these incidents that have happened. It really creates a lot of chaos and confusion and fear in a community. And it's not just for the folks who are being targeted, looked for. You know, I could be at the same intersection when this happens and it's terrifying. So I just want to know how I will know if these folks are legit. I'm not saying we should interfere. I'm not looking for sanctuary city status, but how can we as a town be sure that we are safe? And I don't know how or what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathleen. Um, I hope that Chief was able to give you some understanding of how that process works and I think, yep, that would be very appropriate. Thank you.
My understanding was that the concern was primarily at the federal level with enforcement activities that with federal agencies. It is customary that when a law enforcement entity, whether it's a local, state, federal entity, goes into a local jurisdiction other than their own, they should de-conflict with that local agency. And what that means is to at least provide notice that a XYZ Police Department or the state police, whomever is coming to Littit's Borough because we need to serve this warrant, we need to take this other official activity. And the intent of that de-confliction is to ensure that the local police department knows that that agency is there. Even if they're not requesting assistance from us or our involvement, it at least gives us an awareness that they are there in case something goes wrong or in case a community member would call and say, hey, I just saw somebody walk down the street and it says police on the back of their shirt is a few. What's going on? At least we would have an idea to say, yes, this is what's going on. We know about it. It is an official bona fide entity that's given notice to us that they're coming in versus us being in the position of saying, we know nothing. You don't know. So I I'm not saying every agency, every single time will always go through those de-confliction efforts. It is customary. Uh, my suggestion to her and anyone that would have a question is if you encounter somebody claiming to be law enforcement that you're not sure if they are, if you're questioning them for whatever reason, call nine-one-one. It would at least dispatch us. We may already know through those de-confliction processes, or if nothing else, if if we didn't know, we would send somebody out to investigate, is this person who they say they are or not. So at least it would provide somebody an answer to the question. And best case scenario, we would know that answer before the question's asked, but if nothing else, it would at least prompt a response from us. And also, we the other point we talked to is, you know, I I think the concern, not to paraphrase her, is the identification of officers. And and I reinforced, you know, our uniform and appearance standards clearly indicate what patrol officers wear, how they present, the attire, name identification, you know, shoulder patches, police insignia. So there shouldn't be a concern locally if somebody sees Littit's officer that, you know, I didn't buy this off eBay. Um, so uh, you know, we do have the uniform, parents, identification uh standards in place that meet and exceed uh accreditation standards. So I I think the concern mainly was obviously de-conflicting with the feds.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much for the explanation and thank you for your question.
David?
Don't shoot me. This is not technically new, but
Don't shoot me. This is not technically new, but I was going to follow up with Ken. You said you're going to put that slide presentation on for council. Would that be on the Borough website for public? Because it was presented publicly.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Well, it won't take until October to migrate that data, will it?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Yes, Ron.
So what's it?
You give your name.
I'm sorry, Ron Ruda, 114 East Sixth Street. What's the difference between your policy and Mannheim and Quarryville municipalities who came out in public and said they're behind ICE? So is there a difference? Did I miss something? So that's my question.
So I think what he's referring to is what's called the 287G program. And what that is, it's 287G of the Immigration and Nationality Act, which provides the ability, sorry, so I think what he's referring to is there is a provision in federal law, it's called the 287G provision, which allows the federal government to delegate federal immigration enforcement authority acts that they would typically handle to state and local jurisdictions to act on their own to enforce in place of the feds. So under those agreements, there, the local department, if they would choose to elect to participate in it, they're under the supervision of their own chain of command. They're not necessarily working with the federal agent. They are acting on behalf of the federal government. There's about 1,100 or 1,200 police departments in the Commonwealth, depending on how you count and define police departments. To my knowledge, it was about 15, only about 15 out of the 1,100 to 1,200 that have entered into the 287G agreement. I can't speak to the decision-making intentions, et cetera, of other municipalities. We have not entered into such agreement. I don't believe there's any interest or intent to enter into such agreement. We have enough work to do to focus on, you know, the local needs of the community and other local priorities with the community that, you know, there's other things that we should be doing. So that's not to say we've had instances where we've encountered somebody through normal course of business, whether somebody gets arrested for a DUI or for, you know, a domestic violence incident that checked them for warrants and you find there's some sort of detainer at the federal level. Our officers under those instances are, you know, mandated to follow the law. And, you know, if a court of jurisdiction gives a lawful order to take somebody into custody, we have to do that. But that's certainly a different scenario than acting on behalf of the federal government to proactively seek out and perform duties that are customarily vested upon the federal government. Does that answer your question? Sure.
And do you know the communities or police agencies that have entered into these agreements with the federal government? Does the federal government approach them asking for their cooperation? Or did they approach the federal government saying, we want to be a part of the agreement?
My observation has been that the federal government has put out kind of a general message that this is a partnership that they're seeking. I believe it would be the, the local agency that would make that outreach and that connection to get that process started.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Anyone else question or comment? Okay, thank you all for coming tonight. Appreciate it very much.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, y'all.